This is the Select Board meeting of Tuesday, September 19th. And let us start with the pledge of allegiance by Mark.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, good evening, everyone. Just a couple of things I want to remind everybody of. First of all, the meeting is being recorded, so everybody should know that. And then, secondly, I just want folks to know that the comments and questions that get sent in through the questions or chatroom are saved and are recorded also and are part of the public record. So they are available to the public should the public ask for them. So I just want people to know that their comments are part of the public record. So with that, also just a reminder to anybody tonight who is listening, if you have questions or comments, please use the questions panel to submit them. While there is an option that you can raise your hand, it's easier for us to see if you actually submit your question or even just write to us saying, "I have a question," so that we can know who you are and we can call on you. So with that, open forum and announcements. I don't believe I have any tonight. Jody?
I just wanted to let you know that our moderator, Angela Harkness, asked me if you all would consider moving the town meeting up to 9:00 a.m. It isn't on the agenda. I will ask you that on the 29th. But she feels we need to get going and try to get it done in one day, so. And, oh, I have another thing.
Okay.
I think you asked me about this, Andrea. I'm sorry, I forgot. So I wanted to... Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
I'm having... No, I'm having difficulty hearing you. And I don't know if it's my end or yours.
Can everybody hear me okay?
I hear you, Jody.
I can hear you too.
Okay. Andrea?
Might be Andrea's connection.
I think I'm okay now.
Okay. So I wanted to let everyone know that our flu clinics are about to start. It is on our website and all the instructions of what to do. But for seniors, well, actually, I think it's all residents is on... Maybe I'm wrong. So look online. But for seniors, October 8th, 11:30 to 3:30. And then, yeah, regular is October 15th, 4 to 7. And on the October 15th, and then again on October 22nd. They're doing this at the Franco American Club. There will be social distancing. It is on the website, but just to recap, seniors, October 8th, which is 65 and older, so not you, Mark. But regular flu clinics are October 15th, 4 to 7, and October 22nd.
Okay. Mark?
Yeah, a couple of clarifications to that, Jody. So I think the 15th and the 22nd, first of all, I'm not 65, you're right. The 15th and the 22nd, I think, are at the water department. Not at, according to the instructions, not at the... And then, the second thing is, if you can just get Jeff to confirm, in the instructions, it talked about it's going to be alphabetical somewhat, but it only references that for the over 65 community. But the 15th and the 22nd, it doesn't, even though the instruction said it did. So if you can maybe just get clarification on that as well.
Okay, so you've done a much better job than me, Mark. You are correct.
I should have done the open forum.
I know. I'm sorry. I completely flubbed this up. But the October 15th and 22nd...
You have the rest of the meeting to redeem yourself, Jody.
Is at the Westford Water Department. I do not see by alphabetized last name, but the eight seniors at the Franco is alphabetized. All this is on the website, so please, if you have any questions, call, look on the website, call the town manager's office. We're happy to do a better job. Thank you.
So moved.
Good point.
Anita?
I just wanted to let people know that the Cultural Council grant cycle is open starting October 1st and goes until mid-November. So different organizations in town, as well as like school programs, everyone's eligible, or a lot of people are, for cultural programming, educational programming. So make sure you check it out, because every town and city has one in the Commonwealth. So we really like to keep it focused to Westford. So check, you can find it on our website, the town website.
Tom? Thanks, Anita.
Just a shout out for Jeff Stevenson, the Health Department. They either have or about to launch their survey. And we're really hopeful that we can get a broad participation in the survey across the whole town. A lot of important decisions will be made based on that survey. So when you see in your inbox, please fill it out and get it back to us promptly.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. So our next item on our agenda is an update on the appointment of members to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. I just want to let the community know that there's been a slight delay. I know that we had talked about perhaps doing appointments at this meeting, but we are continuing to receive applications. As folks know, we also asked applicants to answer three additional questions. So we had to go out again and get those back and give people time to do that. So anybody who is interested in applying, your application completed, and that means the citizen's application form, as well as answers to the three questions, needs to be submitted to the town manager's office by 4 o'clock this Friday, September 25th afternoon. And those are the... You know, after that, we expect that the application process will be closed. And then from there, we, as a board, will need to discuss exactly the process and the procedure that we're going to follow in making appointments, as well as depending upon the numbers that we receive and also the school committee's availability and agendas, because this is a joint appointment. It may be necessary, and it may be the most efficient, that we need to schedule just a separate meeting to do this in the future. So we can talk about the logistics on the 29th at our next meeting with hopefully the goal then maybe of making the appointment sometime in the beginning of October. Okay. Moving right along, we have our consent agenda. And we have one item on our consent agenda, which is a concert to be performed by Bonnie Anderson and Stella Owen. The applicant is Alice Phelan. It's Sunday, September 27th, with a rain date of October 4th, and the time is from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Mark?
Yes. Sorry, there was a five.
Tom? I was saying, what are you doing? Tom?
Yes.
Scott? I saw you say yes. Anita?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. And now our 7:15 p.m. item, which is a request for a common vitular license for Godly Smoothies LLC at 8 Cornerstone Square. We're going to get a smoothies store. Any questions or comments?
Is a smoothie a vittel? I didn't know that.
I guess so. It's food, you know?
Yeah, true.
Tom?
Just the Westford Economic Development Committee did discuss this earlier and are just really excited that you're able to come and join us in town and help us open up something new. So just exciting that in these times, we've got entrepreneurs ready to go.
Mark?
Yeah, just out of curiosity, Tom, do you know which spot it's going into?
It's going in the Rangoli spot, I think.
Yeah, very good. Okay, that's great. Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? Great. All those in favor? Mark?
Yes.
Tom?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Okay.
And you, Andrea?
And I. And I. Okay, well, we are ahead of schedule, so we can't do our public hearing yet. Do we have any board reports and updates? Yes, Mark?
Yeah, so I'll just do one. We're going to talk about this in a little bit, but that way we don't have to do the... So I can kill some time. We don't have to do some of the preamble when we get to it. But the Capitol Committee did meet Friday morning for a good two hours or so. It was extremely productive, three hours, is it three hours? Extremely productive discussion about reprioritizing in order to help with some of the budget issues that the town is dealing with this year. So you'll hear the results of that in a little bit. But I do want to thank everybody. That was the first time we had done one electronically. There was an awful lot of people on that. Not only the people on the committee, but all of the people who had to discuss their individual items. So I appreciate everybody sticking in there and working it out, but it was very good and with a good result.
Great. We look forward to hearing the results. Anybody else have any board reports or updates? Okay, seeing none, we have minutes for approval. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from July 14th of our regular session and for release?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a second?
Yeah, second, I did.
Thank you. All those in favor? Mark?
Yes.
Hi.
Tom? Anita?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Hi. And then do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the July 28th, 2020 regular session for release?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor? Anita?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Tom?
Hi.
Hi. Let's see, we have two minutes that we still need to... Before we can start our public hearing.
Seven minutes, actually.
Oh, yes, seven minutes. Jody, do you want to do contracts and purchases from your town manager report?
Sure. So the contracts, we have a contract for water distribution supplies and materials for fiscal year '21, as listed in your packets, as requested for the water department. We have a request for a 36-month pollution insurance policy for 12 North Main in the amount of $37,580 with Zurich Insurance Group. And purchase orders, we have indoor doctor for 75 Defender air purifiers in the amount of $41,175, as requested by the facilities department. EFI Global Inc. for professional engineering services to conduct a survey and audit of the HVAC systems in 11 town buildings in the amount of $19,170, as requested by facilities, and process distributors for 4,800 pounds of constant chlor plus dry chlorinator briquettes in the amount of $11,952, as requested by the water department.
Anybody have any questions about any of these? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Anita?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Tom?
Hi.
Hi.
Would you like me to talk about Halloween?
Yes, yeah.
So...
Yes, please.
The Board of Health did discuss Halloween trick-or-treating. They were waiting on the CDC to give guidelines. Those guidelines did come out today, and it appears that they kind of ranked things in terms of risk. So trick-or-treating, regular trick-or-treating, did look like high risk. But the Board of Health is going to meet on October 19th and review and make a recommendation for the town. But I would say, based on what came out today, which we can put on our website tomorrow, it looks like they're looking for families to have alternative kind of Halloween celebrations to regular trick-or-treating. So we'll get that out there.
Mark?
Yeah, so when you say regular trick-or-treating, you mean like the only kind I know? Where you go door to door? Is that what regular trick-or-treating is?
Yes. I mean, they had several different guidelines for social distancing, trick-or-treating, and all sorts of things. We'll get it on the website. It was quite intensive, like two-page document. But I think they're thinking your regular, where you go up to people's doors, they open it, you, you know, talk and share candy is high risk. So they have several other suggestions. Again, we'll get it out on our website tomorrow, but they're encouraging other ways to celebrate the holiday.
So don't most people wear masks when they're trick-or-treating?
Not so much anymore.
Not my recommendation, but...
Anita?
Is that the next Board of Health meeting? Is that what it's, the 18th?
You know, I honestly can't answer that. And I don't know if Jeff's out there, but that is... And I agree, I did mention that's pretty close to Halloween. I'm not sure they knew when the recommendations would come out. But, you know, they did come out today. I think we can get them on the website, so at least parents will know what the state is assessing. I don't think the state is planning to restrict towns, but they certainly are showing different levels of risk based on, you know, typical activities. So outdoor activities, they're recommending. We will not be having trick-or-treating in town buildings this year, unfortunately. So we'll get that out there tomorrow, and then maybe the Board of Health can move up a meeting. We could certainly ask for that.
Thanks.
Too bad.
Okay. Can we talk about the request for the $30,500 from the sidewalk gift account to a designed Carlisle Road sidewalk? Is Paul out there?
He may not be here yet. Oh, he's there. Good. He would love to talk about that early.
Yeah.
I was going to say, is there a Bruins game on?
No, I'm happy to announce that... I'm sad to announce that the Boston Bruins is the only professional Boston sports team that is not playing right now, so.
The Red Sox aren't playing.
Oh, well, that's good.
Yeah, they are playing tonight.
They're definitely...
So, Madam Chair, Paul Sterrett, Town Engineer. This request is actually from the Pedestrian Safety Committee, but the Engineering Department staffs that committee. And they, as you can see in my memo, went to the planning board last night and got their support to use the sidewalk gift account to extend the design, the Carlisle Road sidewalk, up to Applewood. So we would appreciate your vote of support to use the sidewalk gift account, in which we have about $81,000, to use $30,500 from that.
Is... Before I get to you, Mark, just because it is the Pedestrian Safety Task Force, is Chris Barrett out there? And does he want to say anything if he is?
No, sure. Okay, you did have a memo.
Yeah, I just didn't know if he was attending or not and certainly didn't want to, you know, prevent him from saying anything, but looks like he's not. So, Mark, you had a question? And then, oh, Scott?
No, yeah, just... So, just a comment. This project is still supported by the Capitol Committee. So at our meeting on Friday, we did talk quite a bit about this. The $400,000 that's in there is, we're still recommending. And we also knew that there was going to be additional design money needed and are fully supportive of that.
Okay. Scott?
So, yeah, I'm on the Pedestrian Safety Committee, so without Chris here, it is the single biggest priority, number one priority for that, for our committee. And I think it makes a lot of sense to extend it down further, because it buys us the current development, any future developments on that road. And also, I think I mentioned before, the potential to link Carlisle Road into the trail system to get to the rail trail. So it buys a lot of connectivity for relatively low dollars in terms of planning right now.
Any other comments from the board? Seeing none, and I don't see any questions. Is there a motion to approve the request for $30,500 from the sidewalk gift account to design the Carlisle Road sidewalks?
So moved. Second.
Thank you.
Wait a minute, we have to vote.
Sit back.
All those in favor? Scott?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Hi. Okay. All right, now, we can go back to our 7:20 p.m. item, which is a public hearing, which is a request for a transfer of a General Law, Chapter 138, Section 15, All Alcohol Retail Package Store License from Shri Ganesh Corporation, doing businesses, Westford Market and Liquor and Carlisle, at 6 Carlisle Road, to Nara Yanis Warup Corp., doing businesses, Westford Market and Liquors at 6 Carlisle Road. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor? Tom?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
And is Mark here? I just lost Mark on my screen. Mark, are you still here?
I'm here. I'm here. Hi.
Okay. Okay. All right. Patty, I assume you're out there. Is everything in order?
Patty? Hi.
Patty?
Hello. Eric muted me. Yes, Andy took care of this, and actually, everything is in order. It is a transfer. Mukesh has been there for, oh, at least 20 years. So he is... He and his wife have decided to move on from here, and somebody else is going to have the opportunity. That's great.
Terrific. Well, certainly, we wish them the best of luck in their next ventures. And we welcome the new operators. So any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor? Tom?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Scott?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Hi. You're back, Mark.
Did you change your clothes? I thought it was intermission, and I had to come out for the last part.
Anyway, in case you missed it, it's a unanimous vote, so thank you.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Thank you. Is there a second? All those in favor? Tom?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Anita?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. We are now at our 7:25 p.m. item, which is now a joint meeting with the school committee and the finance committee. And really, the purpose of having a joint meeting with everybody is so that we can all be in one place electronically and remotely speaking, so we can hear an update in terms of the finances, both from the town's perspective and the school's perspective as we plan for fiscal year '21 and our upcoming town meeting. So I think, to start out with, Bill, if either you, I don't know if it's you or if it's Ingrid, can update us on the expenses that are related to school opening? And also discuss the $400,000 supplemental budget for the Westford Public Schools for the Circuit Breaker School Choice Account that we voted on last, gosh, last winter? Back in February, I think. Last February, I believe.
And Ingrid and I will both partake. What I won't do is I won't go through each slide with every detail, because that will take a considerable amount of time. But just know that we have listed here some of the major budget considerations that have been associated with the reopening. I will tell you that we have had a very successful reopening. We had a lot of people, spent a lot of time during the summers. Bill Belichick always says, "No days off." And nobody took any days off to make sure we were able to get students back into school safely, along with staff. But we have, we've had a lot of COVID-19-related health and safety requirements, certainly staffing impact, based on the leaves that we have in compliance with the Family First Coronavirus Response Act, the compensatory services that we're still in the process of assessing from the Bureau of Special Education. These are services that may be necessary for students who were fully remote last year, particularly students with disabilities, who didn't struggle more with the remote instruction than many other students. We've had significant loss in transportation, initially about having the children ride a bus. And so our revenue there is significantly down, even though we are disinfecting every vehicle between each run. Our food service program, and this is a non-general fund impacted item, food service revenues are significantly down. We've had one of the most successful, if not the most successful, food service program in the state, based on student participation. But with only half the students in at any one time and a large number of fully remote students, that program is also hurting. We have lost revenues in terms of full-day kindergarten, our preschool, our instrumental and band program. So that has harmed us. And fortunately, we have had a couple of different sources of funds. The CARES Act, the state, $225 per student. If we can have the next slide. I won't go through this one in great detail, but this next slide outlines to you the various categories, major categories of expenses that have been associated with school reopening. Expenses that we anticipate may carry past December 31st, because the CARES money from the federal government, a little bit over $2.1 million. And the $225 from the state allocated to the school department, which is $1.057 million. Those expire on December 31st. But we've been able to pay for a lot of opening expenses at this point in time, until December 31st, and the state funds, which come through the federal government, but are managed by the state.
Mark?
Yeah, just to interrupt. If everybody can just put themselves on mute who aren't talking, because there's a lot of noise interruption. It's affecting Bill's comments. Thank you.
If you can have the next slide, please. This is a summary of the revenues that we anticipate losing. $600,000 in bus fees, athletic fees down $100,000. Kindergarten, the half-day revenues are down $640,000. And the preschool, we are, you know, we're not having cohort students with our disabled students, and so that revenue is down. So we've lost over $1,500,000 in revenues that normally go to offsetting our budget. Next slide, please. Now, these are the available funds and credits that we have to try and mitigate the impact of those lost revenues. We were able to, after putting on a strict purchasing hold in early January of this year, we didn't wait until February, March, or April. We started in January, because we knew it was going to be a difficult fiscal year and rolling over into fiscal '21. So we were able to restore some of our Circuit Breaker funds and School Choice funds, which, as you know and have historically known, is important to maintain a robust balance as a financial leverage moving from one fiscal year to the next. We were able to put a little bit more money into our special education reserve account, keeping in mind that that can only be used to offset special education costs. We did have a little bit left in our transportation revolving, our athletic revolving, our full-day kindergarten revolving, and our integrated preschool revolving. And our three-through-five music fees, we had a revolving balance of about $60,000. Now, good news also is that last spring, during the development of our fiscal '21 budget, we were told by the Valley Collaborative that our credit, our tuition credit that would apply to fiscal '21 would be $60,000. The state has ruled with certain collaboratives, certain financial changes. So now, we will be receiving $221,000. So that difference that you see there of $161,103 is the difference between the $221,103 that we will actually be receiving and the $60,000 that was built into the budget, fiscal '21 budget when we first developed it. So that presents us with just under $2.5 million, which is going to be critical to us in helping us offset that lost revenue. Now, what we don't know is what the future will bring. As the Commissioner of Education has continued to say to us, you know, as superintendents, you have to continue to learn to live uncertainty. And, you know, that has been the rule and not the exception for the last five or six months. We have the next slide. So if you recall, we talked about a supplemental request of $400,000 back many months ago. And Ingrid and I are here to say that we believe right now that we are not going to continue to request that. In fact, we're not. We have been able to restore, based on our strict purchasing hold last year, able to restore some money back to the School Choice account. We were able to fund an adjustment council that we were going to use the $400,000 for initially. We were able to fund that with Title I funds. This is the first year in the last several years that we became eligible for Title I funds. And we are hiring that person with that federal funding. And we were able to close out a little bit of money to $92,000 to the Special Education Reserve Fund. So we've helped leverage our position to the extent that we will no longer be requesting from the town the $400,000 that we thought we might need about six or seven months ago. Next slide, please.
I think that's it.
Yeah, I don't have to go through this. This is just for your own reading at this point in time, what's eligible and what's ineligible under the various categories of funds from the federal government. So we'll be glad to answer, Ingrid and I, we'll be glad to answer any questions, but looking a little bit more hopeful at this point in time, notwithstanding any uncertainty that we might face in the future.
Well, and I'd like to, can I just chime in one thing? Sorry. You know, going, going back to the fund balances and such is, obviously, you know, using all that, you know, if we have to use $2.5 million, then there's nothing left.
That's right.
So that's obviously, you know, we are looking already, as Jody and Dan are and everyone else, to FY '22. And so I think, you know, we don't want to clean out everything if we still feel vulnerable in '22. Mark?
Yeah, first of all, Bill and Ingrid, thank you so much. It's very helpful, and it's, I certainly know what you all are going through right now, and it is much appreciated. I only have one question. So the million and a half lost revenue from school fees, obviously, that's gross. So what would have been the net? There's a whole bunch of expenses against that that you won't incur. So do you have a sense of what the net benefit is, not just the gross?
So, yes and no. So the $600,000 is what we offset the bus transportation. Right now, that is, you know, built into the total cost of our bus contract. We are looking at capacity right now, and ridership, ridership's, you know, is way down. Bus capacity is down too, because we can only put 24 kids on a bus. So this is the first full week of Pod B, and next week will be the full week of Pod A. We're kind of tracking, seeing exactly how many kids are on each bus in these two weeks, and then making some decisions about how many buses we'll actually need. So that's on the bus side. Athletics, that's a, if you recall from last February, it does seem very long ago, we had proposed an increased athletic fee. And so that $100,000, school committee at their last meeting or the two meetings ago, voted to keep the athletic fee at last year's rate in light of all the uncertainty and abbreviated seasons. The teams are really, they're going to have fewer games, fewer opportunities to play. So, and just, you know, to be cognizant of everyone thinking, looking a little more at their finances and potentially having some reduced finances in this economy right now. School committee felt that it would be appropriate to leave it at last year's level. So that $100,000 is really that loss of what we budgeted for an increased athletic fee. A kindergarten, that's what we bring in. Right now, the kindergarten teachers are being paid with the hybrid model, a little, a .1 more than a traditional, what's in the budget at .5. So in our budget, normally, a full-day kindergarten teacher is paid for .5 out of the general fund budget, and then .5 out of the full-day revolving account. So right now, the kindergarten teachers are teaching .6, because there's a little, our days are a little more than half with the hybrid model. And then the other .4 is, they are being redeployed as interventionists at the K2 level. We're using some of the CARES money that we're receiving through DESI to provide those additional services. And then in January, when those funds run out, that has to be reevaluated.
We're certainly hoping that Congress does pass another piece of legislation, and hopefully, a legislation that will cover at least some lost revenue in communities and school systems across the country, which we know will be in the trillions of dollars. But, you know, every community needs help.
Yeah, I'm sorry, if I can just clarify, clarify the point. So I don't think it's right to say that the million and a half has been a net impact to the budget as a result of this revenue. There are expenses associated with some of these line items that also go away. I just want to make sure that I have that right, right? So this is...
So I would say that they're not going away, right? Those particular expenses. Some of them, perhaps, some of the, so with kindergarten particularly, and I did originally have that different in my analysis. I just wanted to show the actual impact, because those kindergarten teachers are still being paid. The .1 will come out of the kindergarten revolving fund, but the .4 is coming from the CARES funds. And then there is no funding source after the CARES fund runs out for those redeployed kindergarten teachers as interventionists. So that is something that will have to be discussed. Preschool, moving on, those are, we have not been able to reduce the number of preschool special education teachers that service the children, even though we're not taking any tuition-paying students. So I know, it's not a perfect answer, and I know what you're looking for, Mark, and I'm, I can try to follow up if you want.
Yeah, that would be great, thank you.
Yeah. Tom?
Again, echoing Mark, thanks, Bill, and Ingrid, and everyone on your teams that have been working on this. So this assumes, I think, that we're going to continue with the hybrid model. I guess it's a question, do things, is the budget under more strain or less strain if for a period of time we have to go to all virtual? Or if conditions improve during the course of the year enough that we can go to kind of normal, face-to-face, Monday through Friday?
Well, if we go to fully remote, there may be some staff who would be furloughed in the school system. I'm hesitant to mention that right now, but that is a possibility. That also may impact athletics, because the commissioner has stated that if a school system goes fully remote, the school committee has to approve continuation of sports. That is somewhat nebulous in some communities right now, and maybe in this community. If we fully return, we will have to see what the impact is on the bus revenues. Not sure if more parents would feel comfortable with their, with their children on the bus. And, you know, it would take us, quite honestly, Tom, about two weeks, two to three weeks to prepare for fully remote. Because keep in mind, we've removed furnishing, furnishing some classrooms to be able to provide appropriate social distancing. But, you know, we have the staffing in place to, you know, to provide full in-person services as well as full remote. So, you know, some additional expenses, perhaps the full return, some additional, but some declining expenses possible with a fuller remote.
Thanks.
Yes, I think we would save, there are definitely, on the expense side, more cost savings going fully remote. Not only on the personnel side.
Yeah, I think you've answered my question. It was basically, does this represent, you know, a likely maximum expense level or close to it? And it sounds like any veering from here might save a little bit of money or might be sort of ambiguous. But it looks like we're planning at a good level for any of the circumstances that were...
Right, and we tried to plan out for the full year, as much as we could.
Thank you.
Anita?
Yeah, I just have a question, and again, thank you, everyone, for all of your hard work. I know this is a really complicated time. And I just wanted to make sure that I understood everything correctly, where there was one slide in your slide deck, Bill, the very last slide, that talks about the coronavirus relief funding, yeah, Fund School Reopening Grant Program. And here, vendor services, your third line down, food services and transportation. Does that offset any of the transportation costs listed in your lost, loss of revenues? No.
No, unfortunately, I mean, I can't tell you how many times in all the guidance documents I have, it keeps repeating over and over again, may not replace, you know, lost revenue. So it really, and it needs to be unbudgeted, so it needs to be on top of what we've already budgeted, that we are spending more than we've already budgeted.
But the loss of revenue, sorry, go ahead.
It's a historic issue associated with federal funds, supplanting versus supplementing. We're not to supplant our local obligation.
Right, but I just didn't know if, I guess I thought that the bus fees that students or families pay only are a portion of what you pay to the, to D bus?
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
But, but that's already budgeted through our general fund allocation.
I see.
But for example, if you look back at the documents that we uploaded or submitted last week for your packets, which goes a little more into detail, kind of what buckets and a little more detail into the costs, there's $170,000 for special education transportation. That's what we're estimating is above what we budgeted. So those funds through the end of December would be eligible.
Okay.
Christina?
Thank you. Could you go back to Slide 2, please? So I just want to get an idea. Ingrid, I don't know how easy this is for you to do, but I think some of these expenses are like on a 12-week basis, and some are for the year. Is it easy for you to give us somewhat of an indication of those line items?
The 12 weeks really, mostly, I would say, in the staffing section. Down that, on this slide, the $979,000. Of that, there's a kind of 12-week allocation of $433,000 for leaves of absence, because that, those 12 weeks correspond with the Families First Leave Act or the Virus Leave Act, that staff are, could be eligible to take. So that, that amount is to cover those leaves. About, it costs about $17,000 for, to cover a 12-week teacher leave.
Okay, so if I'm looking at this correctly, and I'm guessing at my math here, there's an initial, you know, almost $2.6 million. If we go past 12 weeks, there's going to be that 400 and something thousand for staffing if people continue to take a leave, plus I'm guessing some PPE and a few of the other smaller line items. That will be in addition to this $2.6, correct?
It really depends. The leave, right now, eligibility, sorry, it's always been a word I've had trouble with, runs out also at the end of December. So it depends on Congress extending that.
But there may, Christine, there may be some additional personal protection equipment expenses also.
Yep, okay.
So Paul's really leveraged what we bought already, and seems to think we have a pretty good supply.
Okay, thank you.
Even moving forward.
Okay, so I just have one other question. My second question is, when you look at using all those revolving funds and some of those other, the other funds to offset some of this, like you said, that's kind of going to wipe you out. So is there a Plan B if Congress doesn't come through?
So we're already, I have a very, I think, stingy reputation over at the school department. I think, Bill, wouldn't you agree, we have a unofficial buy, spend only what you have to do to open school purchasing hold?
Yeah, the only expenditures that we are authorizing really are those for startup costs, certainly for necessary curriculum and instruction supplies, but also health and safety issues. Other than that, we have already started a purchasing hold because of the uncertainty that we face going forward.
And also, we are, you know, keeping an eye, of course, like any municipality and government department, you know, staff is the highest expense. And, for example, our cafeteria workers, about half of our cafeteria workers have been furloughed. Actually, they were furloughed completely, but Colleen Wallace, our food service director, actually had to recall them now for Mondays. Mondays is the day that families that are in the non, in the remote week, the off week of in school, in the hybrid, that is the week that they can come and pick up their meals for the week. And there's been a huge demand. And she realized that for those Mondays, she needs more staff in, so that now half the staff is furloughed only Tuesday through Fridays.
Thank you.
So we're trying to make those adjustments, you know, where we can, we see places that we can save. So... Dennis, I see you, but I skipped Scott.
Dennis, I see you, but I skipped Scott, who had his hand up earlier, so let me go to Scott, and then I'll go to you, Dennis, okay?
Yep, very good.
Scott?
So I'll add my thanks to the rest of the board for a lot of work here. And I guess, I guess the question got kind of half-answered or mostly answered by Christine's questions, but I'm trying to figure out what our exposure is. So we've got a CARES Act that goes through at the end of December. We have projections of our own fiscal year, which goes through June. I think we're assuming for the baseline, no new CARES Act in January 1st in terms of funding. So I guess, is this our worst case, assuming no CARES Act? Or are there going to be expenses coming up post-January that, you know, are covered now, which won't be covered then?
Well, go ahead.
I don't think we're going to realize any extraordinary expenses after January 1st, although we will have some staffing costs. If you recall, the full-day kindergarten teachers that we are using as interventions, there will still be some carryover into the rest of the fiscal year. But, you know, we've tried to plan this as carefully as possible, and that's why we've got, as I said, the purchasing hold on. Ingrid, if you want to elaborate anymore?
I think too, it's, we're hoping this is the worst-case scenario. That's what, you know, we tried to do with this. I did, I do have to point out that I did have to put an asterisk by special education services, because that's, to me, you know, one of the biggest unknowns. Our special education department is having to reevaluate every student requiring services and needing services. And then, obviously, they're always new. So it's trying to see, you know, how much additional we'll have to provide, and want to provide, obviously, to provide the best education for all students. So that is one area, which is why, you know, having additional circuit breaker is so important.
So I was going to say, Ingrid, what we mentioned before is the two most important accounts to preserve in my mind are the circuit breaker and school choice, because those are the leverage accounts that help us with stability from one fiscal year to the next.
Okay, Dennis?
Okay, question for Bill.
Sorry, Bill, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Oh, no, you didn't. It's fine.
You referenced the Family First Act, and I was wondering, can you tell us how many teachers took advantage of that and what impact it's had in the school system, please?
Well, it has had a financial impact, because, you know, we are paying the staff members, but we're paying, in some instances, replacements or substitutes, okay, long-term substitutes. We have calculated into our assumptions here about a total of about 30 leaves. And so, as Ingrid said, it's about $433,000 through the end of, through December. That's a 12-week period. And, you know, and that's something that every, every school system is experiencing to varying, varying levels.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, I don't see any. So with that, Ingrid and Bill, and to all your staff, and everybody who's working on that, thank you all very much. We know just how hard you're all working, and it's a moving target that changes literally week from week. So we really do appreciate all the hard work you're doing.
Thank you very much.
So, um. And I think, you know, we'll keep having, you know, as things change and as budget changes and finances change, we'll continue to have, you know, joint meetings so that we can all, you know, be informed and stay up to date, and we can all be working with the same information, and we're all on the same page. So, thank you. All right, we have Jody, a request to increase the spending limit on the fiscal year 21 coronavirus expense account to $2,142,123.
Yes, thank you. Before I talk about that, I just want to mention briefly on the after-school recreation program that Jim Dwayne has been working with the schools and with D-Bus. And I think, as of today, he heard that D-Bus was going to charge us about $40,000 to transport to the after-school program. And so when he factors that into his revenue and expenses, it basically removes the profit, but still, you know, allows us to provide that service. We are still negotiating with D-Bus, and so we may be able to do a little better on that. But I wanted to let you know that that is out there, and that was not an expense that he had expected. And then additionally, he's still working with the state on the additional licensing that they required, that they just informed us of, I think, two weeks ago. So that has not been approved yet, but as soon as we get these two issues resolved, the classrooms are ready, and he'll be ready to start registration on that program. So the item, and the item on the agenda is, we basically are going to ask you to go all the way to the limit of the funds. I think we've spent about $428,000 now, but it does, we do need to get this money spent by December 30th. And so we're asking to increase it to $2,142,123.
Okay, any questions? Is there a motion from the board?
It's moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Tom?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Anita?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead. I don't know, Jody, is it you or Dan who's going to update us on the FY 2021 budget and free cash analysis?
We're going to give you like a one-minute update here. Dan, you are out there. There he is.
I'm here.
We had a little bit of change, and we just want to bring you up to date on that, Dan, if you want to do that.
Sure, so the entire analysis is the same as the one that we presented on September 8th, with the exception of the state and county assessments that we received then. Those came in two days after that meeting, so it's only changed this analysis. Essentially, it's an extra $30,000 coming out of free cash that we need to use to balance our budget. Most of that is because of the charter schools sending tuition. I believe, you know, more kids are signing up for some charter schools, so they are assessing those for those costs this year. So basically, what that did is that it increased our, the amount that we have to apply to budget, balance the budget from about $322,000 to $352,000. And that's the only change from last week, or two weeks ago.
Scroll down, scroll down here, show you.
Scroll down a little there, yeah? Keep going.
There you go.
Next page?
Page 2.
There we go, it's at 29,876 there. If you go to the bottom, it'll show the total deficit at this point. Keep going, one more.
Can do it.
352 at the bottom there.
So the 242 is what our operating budget deficit is, but the total is 352. So then we'll jump right to the next page, which is the free cash analysis. And we do have a question for you tonight. As Mark mentioned, we did go to capital on Friday, and we, this reflects the vote of capital, which you're not going to talk about tonight, but we were just putting it in a spreadsheet for you. The question we have for you tonight is, we did have a $200,000 placeholder for OPEB. If you recall, we funded about, I think it was $1,200,000 in the operating budget, and then we were going to fund another 200. But if you scroll down to the bottom, you'll see that if we do fund 200,000 at this town meeting for OPEB, we will only have 174,000 in free cash left. So it's our recommendation that we hold off on that extra 200,000, at least at this October town meeting. We can reevaluate it in our March or May town meeting. But we're asking for your direction on whether we hold off on that while we put the rest of the documents together for the warrant.
Comments? Answers to Jody's question? Scott?
Yeah, I think I agree with Jody. It's the time to keep our powder dry. Not only what's coming up in the future, so I would say we take the 200,000, keep it in free cash, and not, not for the open right now.
Tom?
I agree with Scott.
I agree with Scott. Mark is shaking his head, so I'm assuming that that means he agrees.
It pains me, but yes, I agree.
Okay. Jody, do you need a, do you need a vote, Jody, or can you just take that as an opinion?
I think that's fine. You'll be voting, but we will be removing that. So then we'll dive right into the Select Board Fiscal Year 22 Budget Policy Direction. We did take this to the Finance Committee last week, yeah?
Mark?
Yeah, so.
Wait, Mark?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that before we leave this sheet, whether there's any questions about what capital items were deferred as opposed to what was recommended. I just want to make sure the board and the Finance Committee are aware of what the capital committee recommended not going forward with.
So that's on our next agenda, Mark?
That's what I thought, so please keep going.
Okay.
Thank you. I was just going to say, I think it's on our next agenda. Okay, so.
Okay, hold on a minute. Okay, so let me go to the Budget Policy Direction. And you don't need to approve this tonight. We at least wanted you to see it. I did take it to the Finance Committee last week. We did change it. I think you can see in the beginning paragraph, we're talking about possible significant revenue shortfalls. And so, again, you don't have to decide this tonight. We can certainly revisit it. But this is what we're recommending you consider for '22.
Okay, Tom?
Overall, Jody, I thought this was a great draft. Just for clarification, it looks like any, any new expense basically has to have an offsetting reduction. And just for clarity, that is, that's not any new spend, that's any new spend that's not currently called out in the budget, right? Because we do have some, some things like the new first responders that we've agreed to add partway through the year. This would not be subject to that. We don't have to make a reduction to accommodate that, right? You're just saying for anything new that gets proposed.
So this was actually in your last year's, too. I think what, what the board had said, you know, last year or maybe the year before, is if you're going to propose new positions, they have to fit within the revenues that we have. So Dan and I did a first look at our next three years, and it is looking a little bleak. So that will be something we have to consider as we move forward. I honestly can't tell you whether I will have room to fund any new positions in public safety this year. I think what we just tried to say here is, you can't add new positions if we don't have revenue, because they'll be gone as soon as we get to the next budget cycle, so I don't know if that helps.
I just was wondering whether, because in the last meeting, we voted to continue to move forward with the additional first responder position. So I just want to make sure that it's clear to everyone that that is in the budget, as written.
Yes.
What we're talking about is anything new, we would have to have a subsequent reduction.
That's correct. That is in the '21 budget, and it is funded. But anything in '22 that isn't in '21, yes, that, that's correct.
Okay.
Mark, and then Scott?
So do we have union, any unions up for negotiations in '22, Jody?
So we have all of our contracts settled except FIRE, which took a one-year this year, if you recall, and they are all at 2%.
So I'm wondering if in your budget policy, you want to include something for union negotiations? I think we typically do, right? Just.
That would be number two, the second bullet, which is satisfying.
Including it in there? Okay.
Yeah, because contractual, those are contractual.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Scott?
Actually, Jody answered that. I was just going to say that, to be clear, that the two, the one police, one FIRE position that we mentioned last week are in the FY '21 budget, so they don't apply here. What applies here is the remainder of slots that we failed to get to that five and eight that maybe we can't do this year. But those two spots don't go away.
Um, Dennis?
Yep, thank you. I made a comment at the last Finance Committee meeting regarding the second bullet. I think I'd like to at least reemphasize it here before the board. It says, satisfy existing and anticipated future contract and mandated obligations. As Mark Cost pointed out, and Jody backed up, that does refer to union contracts. I think it would be, it should be very carefully looked at. I think satisfying existing contracts is not an issue, but when you start mentioning anticipated future contracts, I think you may need a caveat to the extent that something like, and I suggested the wording from the old Quinn bill, which was subject to future revenues. You may just want to qualify that so that you don't commit yourself to something that we may not be able to make, so.
Thank you. Um, Paul Fassbender has a comment here. I'd like to discuss a possible addition. So Paul, if both Eric can unmute Paul, and Paul, if you can unmute yourself.
Okay, hi. I just wanted to point out that times are tight also for Westwood families, especially those with lower income. And it would feel reassuring if there was a written statement in the budget planning direction that says, we're going to plan to do the budget with no overrides. This is largely due to the economic disruption due to coronavirus, shutdowns, restrictions, and stuff like that. Some families have their incomes strapped and so forth, so if you can work that in, it would be helpful.
We'll certainly take, oops, I just, we'll certainly take a look at that. And somebody needs to mute themselves, because we're getting echoes. There we go. Paul, certainly, you know, thank you for the suggestion. We'll certainly take a look at it. Any other comments or questions? Okay, I don't see any. So I think we're at the point where the Select Board is going to take positions on certain warrant articles.
Well, would the board, would the board like to vote that Budget Policy Direction, or do you want to keep thinking about it?
Why don't we put it on our, you know, for next week? Why don't we, you know, just give everybody a final chance to consider it, to see if there's any tweaking of wording that we want to do, and we can vote on it next week, Jody, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, so I think we're at our warrant. So hang on while I get my motions out. So, um, so Article 1 is to approve unpaid bills from previous years, and I guess, Jody, there are no unpaid bills?
That's correct. So we can either remove this altogether from the warrant or move to dismiss?
I guess procedurally, we haven't signed the warrant yet, right?
Right, you're going to do that next week.
Okay, um, so I think we can just, since we haven't signed it, I think we can remove it. Mark?
Yeah, the only reason, the only reason I would suggest not doing that is I think it's a really positive statement. Whatever there, we can move to dismiss right away. But I love something like this. It's, you know, it's a testament to what Dan and his team do, and Jody, that we, you know, we don't have any unpaid bills. I just think it makes a real quick statement. It doesn't take any time.
Good, so, um, so is there a, if the pleasure of the board is to keep the motion here, is there? motion here, is there a motion to recommend it be dismissed?
Second.
And all those in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, um, Article 2, Fiscal Year 2021 Budget Adjustments.
So we did, we did update this in your packets today. The motion, one, we already talked to you about was the OPEB, and you decided that you are willing to not fund that right now, so we will remove that. And so all the other items that I think Eric could pull up on the screen, they are actually reductions to existing town operating budgets.
That's great. Um, a question for you, and maybe you've answered this, and I just can't remember, the $217,000 reduction in risk management?
That's health insurance, health insurance. Yep.
Ah, okay.
Because we budgeted for an 8%, and we were able to secure a 4.9%. So that's the balance. And everything else is mostly personnel changes that we were able to negotiate, changes in hours, reduction in hours, not filling positions. And that's in refunding or refinancing some debt. So all these are reductions to town budgets, 515,000.
Motion to recommend.
Ask if anybody else had any other questions first, but. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Mark?
Hmm, yes.
Anita?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye.
So Article 3 is budget transfers. We do not have any, so this can be dismissed or removed.
Motion to dismiss?
Do you want to dismiss it, or for the same reasons that Mark stated why we don't, why we aren't going to dismiss Article 1? Do we just want to keep this on there to let folks know that we have no budget transfers?
That would be my recommendation.
Yeah, okay. Oh, is there, so Tom, is your motion to support dismissing this article at town meeting?
Yes.
Second.
Is there a second? Thank you. Okay, all those in favor, Anita?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
For proclorate expenses?
Right, if you remember, we had 110,000 in the annual town meeting, and we decided to split it in half. So we did 55,000 then, and we're asking for 55,000 now. And this is for remediation from the proclorate bloom.
Any questions? Is there a motion to recommend?
Removed. Second.
Second. All those in favor, Scott?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Aye.
So I believe Tootie is here for the CPC Article 5.
Okay.
I'm seeing her on the list.
Marilyn is here. I just got a message that Marilyn's here. So let's, I assume she's telling me because she's prepared to speak to this. So if you could unmute Marilyn.
Can you hear me now?
I can. Hello?
Hello. Thank you, everybody, for all your hard work. And this one really feels good because I feel that everybody really dug deep and worked really hard about what we are suggesting. So we had another meeting, considering that it did not pass the first time, and we unanimously approved the use of these funds to take care of the amenities building at Westford Academy. They have no more ability to get any kind of a waiver. It would go totally dark. We think this is the appropriate place to spend this money. We have the money. We don't have to go and ask people to have a debt exclusion. We don't have to take away other funds from capital. The money is there. We can do it over a bonding period of time, I think it's 10 years. And it was unanimous vote from CPC.
Okay, questions or comments from the board? Mark?
Yeah, so we did have a good discussion at the CPC meeting. Let me just make sure that the board understands that we had a very discussion about how this should move forward. And I think Jody is going to work with Angela to see if we can get like a five-minute or so presentation on how the CPC, what it was originally designed for, how this fits into the original definition of what CPC funds are, can be used for, for recreation, and provide a little bit of history about all of the funds and the various categories that CPC has been used for, which includes recreation. Because I think there's a, a little bit of education and a little bit of misunderstanding about some of that. And so I think there's some work to do in October to get ready to do that. And Jody, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about how this is also being positioned as a, as a backdrop in case that were to not pass in that way.
Yes, so the Finance Committee and the Community Preservation Committee voted unanimously to bring this forward to the town meeting again as a CPA article. But in the event that the town meeting does not want to do that, we want the town meeting to understand that we do need to move forward. So we have listed it under capital, too, and we have listed it as a debt exclusion because we don't feel that we would be able to fit this within the levy limit. So I think what we'd like to do is after CPC presents the article, and then a historical brief lesson of why we adopted CPA is given, I think we would then like to be recognized to let the voters know that there is another option, and that would be to fund it through a debt exclusion as a capital. We will be prepared if somebody amends that to be funded within the levy limit, and we will show what the impact will be to all the other capital if, if it's chosen to be funded within the limit.
Yeah, and just, just, yeah, just one other comment. So the Capital Committee meeting, or Capital Committee at one of its upcoming meetings will be prepared to talk about if the 1.8 million does have to come out of other capital, as Jody just referenced, the impact that will have on what is left of, of capital. So we did not, at our last meeting, go through that prioritization. We dealt with the other half million dollars worth of cuts that we made, but we will be prepared. Because it's important that if people decide that they don't want to fund it through CPC, and they're against a capital, or against a debt exclusion, well, the only other option, of course, is to take it out of remaining capital projects, which will decimate some of the infrastructure that is still, still exists in capital.
Okay. Go ahead, Jody.
So I see Marilyn is asking a question about the order of speaking, but I believe that Tootie, the Chair of CPC, said she wanted to speak first. So this is a CPC article, and so we'll respect that.
I guess my, my, my answer to that would be is that the Chair of the CPC should probably work together with the schools and determine, you know, who is going to speak and in what order, and who's going to say what. So I think I'm going to throw it back to the, to them to figure that out for town meeting, and then to let the moderator know so that she knows as well. Okay. So with that, is there a motion to recommend the, to, is there a motion to recommend approval of the Community Preservation Committee expenditures for the amenity bill, amenities building at Westford Academy's trustee fund?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Aye. Okay. So now we are going to Article 7.
Tom Mahana is here from the Permanent Town Building Committee to discuss this.
Great. Hello, Tom. Tom?
Can you hear me now?
Putting the Beaver Brook.
Yep, now we can.
Okay, thank you.
No, we can hear you now, Tom.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody. So our committee met last week with Chris Logan from Context Architects to discuss kind of the next steps going forward with the, with the center building project. Essentially, we really have not done any work on this project since, since really the quarantine pandemic hit. And the last real public meeting we had on it was, was in early March, when we brought in, invited all the abutists to the project to give an update and presentation on the status. So at this time, you know, it's our recommendation that we not move forward with appropriation request for the construction funding at special town meeting. We just feel that this is not an appropriate time to, to, to request funding for, you know, for, for this project. In the meantime, you know, I'd like to just wait and see over the next six months or so, kind of how, how things will evolve regarding the pandemic and what modifications we may need to make into the, you know, to the, into the building, possibly with the building design. And some of the things that we discussed with Context included really kind of, a lot of the focus was really on, and they've been giving some examples of what they're currently doing on some of their other similar projects. And it's, the focus is on some of the mechanical systems, you know, plumbing fixtures, HVAC systems, touchless, you know, the touch surfaces in the, in the buildings, looking at different types of, you know, like chilled air systems, providing windows that actually open, you know, for fresh air, you know, some, some of these, some of these amenities or changes that we could, could make in the design. So it's our recommendation at this time not to move forward with, with the construction funding. But we may also want to consider kind of taking, taking advantage of this time between now and, you know, spring, you know, when annual town meeting will come up, as far as looking, maybe revisiting what some of these changes could be in the building. You know, in making some recommendations on what we could do to accommodate, you know, kind of this new world that we now, that we now all live in. We do have money available, not only within context's current agreement, but within the original appropriation that was, that was made back in 2018. The original appropriation for the design of this was $320,000. So we're only under agreement with Context currently for about $250,000. So there's, there's a substantial amount of money left, not only in unspent funds that are in their existing agreement, which has really been allocated to take it to the next step, which is to move forward with the regulatory approval process, you know, specifically the planning board process, but above, above their agreement that we're already committed to, this still funds in the appropriation, too. So, sorry about that. So, you know, so, you know, we're recommending not moving forward with the, with the construction funding, but maybe also taking, you know, taking advantage of this time that we have to maybe move forward with the permitting process. Because even if the, you know, even if we still move forward with the, with the actual project itself, the building footprint, you know, most likely is not going to change the outside of the building. We're pretty much as, as have set. So would, you know, we, we may want to at least consider moving forward with the planning board process. To my knowledge, we have not been directed to stop work on the project. So, you know, so I'm open to any sort of comments or feedback or opinions on, on how you would like to see us proceed or not.
Comments from the board? Mark?
Yeah, I guess, thanks, Tom. My only comment would be right now not to have a discussion about whether to go forward or not. I think that's a separate agenda item. This is really all about, you know, pulling it basically from the, the special town meeting. So I think that just requires a whole nother level of discussion that Tom has asked.
Okay.
Scott?
I was just observing, you know, I was part of the meeting that Tom's describing, and given it's more architect, and the sort of uncertainty other towns are, are facing with these public buildings, I think we want to wait because see what, what other towns make some rest to front before you start getting to designs and change orders and, you know, the difficulties that can arise from this kind of environment. So I think it makes sense to put this on hold for, for the moment.
Yeah, I mean, I would agree. I think we should put it on hold for the moment, given these times and circumstances, also given some of the things that Tom talked about in terms of redesigning the, the building with, within the context of COVID-19, and perhaps, and other precautions and design elements that are going to need to be considered. So I think it makes sense not to move forward with it at this time. And I also agree with you, Mark, that, you know, moving forward, how do we want to move forward? What do we want to do? What do we want to direct the Permanent Building Committee to do, I think, is a topic for discussion at a future meeting. So, um, so with that, um,
So make a motion to dismiss? Is that what you're, what we want to do?
Yes.
Yeah, so moved.
I can just remove it from the warrant if you want. I mean, if you, if you want to leave it in the warrant, then it will be up for discussion. It's up to you, whatever way you want me to go, but.
I'm okay with removing it.
I'm fine with removing it. Anybody, everybody else? Tom is nodding his head, Anita's nodding her head.
No, I think, I agree with moving.
So I do see that Angela has a question, Andrea.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Hi, Angela.
Hi. Yeah, I was just gonna say, please, I think we need to, as opposed to Articles 1 and 3, remove it because we need to remember we're going to be outside. It's going to be October, could be cold, could be hot. I don't think we want to waste any time with things that we aren't intending to vote on anyway. Normally, I'd be in favor of giving everybody all the information they need about everything, but if we're not going to vote on something anyway, let's take it off now so we don't have to even waste a few minutes getting it dismissed at town meeting.
Okay, I think with that, we will remove it. All right, Article 10, which is to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept easements on Carlisle Road.
Paul Sterrett is out there for the next three articles.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Paul Sterrett, Town Engineer. So Article 9, 10, and 11, for the Oak Hill Plain Road and Moore Road project, the Carlisle Road project, and the Beaver Brook Bridge reconstruction project are just another layer of approvals given to the Board of Select, the Select Board, so that no one's land is interfered with without your say in multiple meetings and multiple hearings. So we've been through the process on each of these projects, and So we've been through the process on each of these projects and I can represent that everything is in order. And this would just give you, if everyone is in agreement, the power to take easements for the project.
Any questions? Let's.
Motion to recommend. Sorry, go ahead.
Why don't we do them just individually, Mark, just to make sure that, you know, it's clear, in case, just in case there's any opposition to any of them. So why don't you start with Article nine?
Motion to recommend Article nine, sorry.
Second.
That's okay. Um, all those in favor? Tom?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Hi. Is there a motion to recommend Article 10?
I moved.
Second? All those in favor? Mark?
Yes.
Anita?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Hi. And then is there a motion to recommend Article 11?
So moved.
Second? And all those in favor? Tom?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Hi. Okay. Article 17.
Sorry, Andrea, I have one question that just came to mind. Paul, like the easements on Carlisle Road, those are those are related to the sidewalk project, yes?
Yes.
So since it's a question really, Andrea, for you and Jody. Since we have the $400,000 in the proposed in the capital program for Carlisle Road sidewalks. And then we also have this, if one should fail. How do we deal with the other?
Jody?
So the capital is Article six, I believe. So we will know if the Carlisle Road sidewalk passes before we get to the easement. So in my opinion, if the Carlisle Road sidewalk doesn't pass, then you just dismiss the easement article.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right. Article 17. So Article 17 is is a motion to amend our bylaws relating to the date of the annual town meeting by deleting the current text and replacing it with the following text. Which is to state that annual town meeting shall be considered at 10:00 AM on the Saturday following the annual town election. What in essence this does is put town meeting back in May, where it was before we changed it to March. That we did. When did we do that? I forget.
About eight or nine years ago or something.
Looks like 2011 is is when we might have done it. So, yeah, so. So that's what this article does, to do it permanently. Mark?
Yeah, I it just seems odd that we're doing this. I mean, it was such a hullabaloo to move it from May, that that's a technical word, from May to March. And it was all about spring soccer and spring sports and people aren't showing up in May because they've got kids activities, so let's do it in March. And now we're kind of having the opposite discussion. To me, like, to do this right now in the midst of everything else that's going on while this year it may be nice because everybody's so overworked from from COVID. I think to permanently make it in May against all the arguments we just had, you know, eight or nine years ago, just seems I just, I don't understand it. So I personally wouldn't, I'm not going to die on a sword for this one, that's for sure, but I don't understand why moving it back to May makes sense right now.
So I I actually favor moving it back to May. And part of it is because I never favored moving March when it came up eight years ago or nine years ago. You know, I think that all the reasons, at least that were stated back then, why we wanted to move it for March was for better attendance and, you know, people would come because it wouldn't be a nice spring day in May. I honestly, what drives attendance at town meetings is really what's on the warrant at the time and how, you know, and people's level of interest and commitment. So on the meetings where we've had, you know, tremendous attendance, you know, the last one I can think of was the, you know, was the override for the teachers that did indeed have tremendous attendance in March. But honestly, I don't see our attendance going up or down because the town meeting is either in May or in March. The other reason, and I think we can, at a future meeting, we'll talk about separately whether we're going to move it to May this year or keep it in March. And I think that there are reasons to moving it in May this year because of the pandemic and the budgetary problems that we have and the fact that we're not, it's going time to understand where we are in fiscal '21 before we can start planning for fiscal '22. But I also think that, you know, in general, having town meeting in May gives town staff and everybody, you know, a longer period of time to get our budget in order. We have more information from the state to help us plan for our budget. So I think that that's certainly another reason. And I think finally, and and this really doesn't really play into a decision that Westford has to make, but I do think it's worth noting that we are one of the first towns in the Commonwealth to have a town meeting and having it in March is sort of the earliest of towns in the Commonwealth. And, you know, I think, so those are some of the reasons where I think that it makes sense to move it back to May. Anita?
I agree with you. Yeah, I agree with you, Andrew, on your last point about the budget discussions and just budget season, how it started so early in the year and how stressful it is. And having an extra month or two would be really helpful. But I do have one question about local elections. And I know my timing is really off because I started in July, which was late this year, but elections are usually in April. So is that?
No, town elections are the first Tuesday in May.
In May, thanks. Okay.
In May, yeah.
This would still be after. This would be before?
No, it's and and then town meeting is the first Saturday after the election.
First Saturday after the one. Okay. Okay, thanks.
Tom, you had your hand up?
I think Scott was first. I want to jump on Scott.
Scott?
I do know you could cover, Andrea. As I said, I think this buys us what signature items every year, time meeting is the budget, right? And the more information, the better. We go into our budget process. And timing in March with a lot of uncertainty. This coming year will be even worse than other ones. So I think, yeah. They buy may buy you time, which is critical.
And Tom?
Yeah, so I agree for the reasons that you mentioned, Andrea. And I think we have seen sort of a heightened level of interest and participation in some of the budgeting processes, which I think only strengthens the argument for there to be more time.
Anita?
Sorry, just to go back to the town elections thing. And so I had to like think through that sentence for a little bit. So so if there are new members coming on board, right, their their like first big thing is town meeting and they're like not able to speak to any other things that the select board voted to.
Well, I mean, yeah, that usually was how it worked is that the new town, the the new elected officials sat with their boards at town meeting. Yes.
Okay.
We do have a comment from John Cunningham, which says moving the town meeting will also allow seniors who go to Florida to participate.
That's very interesting, considering he was on the other side of this before he started going down to Florida. You got that right, but I haven't been to Florida lately. No, I think. Very interesting, John.
And I don't think you're going to Florida anytime soon, John.
No, I was on the committee that originally did this, and we thought we'd get better participation. And that really hadn't materialized. And I think moving it to May is okay with me. And you did kind of realize, you know, when some of the things that we've acted on in annual town meeting in March, the seniors come back from Florida and then they almost voted down in the election. So I think this would be a good move.
Okay, Mark, before I go to you, Chris Kuntz has a question. Chris, you out there?
We need to unmute Paul. I think Paul is in the same place.
Okay.
Hi, this is Chris Kuntz, Texas Road. I may have already heard an answer, but I also am confused as to why you would have an election and then followed by the town meeting. It just seems awkward to me. This year, we did it with the town meeting first and then the election, which seems to be a great way to do it because we had all the people who knew all the answers at town meeting in their roles to ask questions and provide the data and so forth. But if you've had elections and you have new people there, I mean, that's really confusing.
I mean, I can, Jody, go ahead.
So I'm gonna just offer a suggestion, which everybody may hate, but I think this is a pretty big deal. The Select Board do have the authority to delay town meeting in the in the coming spring, just as you did this year. I just wonder if we should have a group kind of look at this and bring back recommendations at our annual town meeting versus try to figure this out during COVID in outdoors when it might snow. I don't know, just a suggestion. You have every right to move it, but just the questions that are coming up right now with maybe you want to look at the election too and do a twofer. So just an idea, maybe, maybe study it a little more, but that's my my input.
Mark?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. And my only other comment is I don't think John should be on it since he's a flip flopper.
All right.
No comment.
What's the pleasure of the board that we table this for at this point in time for further discussion?
I would agree with that.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Then we will do that and.
So maybe we remove the article?
Yeah. What?
I was asking if we table or remove, the things that we move, right?
Right, we're going to remove the article from town meeting. Recognizing that, of course, if 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 circumstances are such, just as we did this year, we have the right to move town meeting from March to a later date if need be. And then we can pick up the discussion of whether we want to do it permanently, move town meeting back to May or not, or some other date.
So do you want to move to remove for this?
Yeah, please.
So I'll make a move to remove article. Sorry, I can't read my glasses on, but.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Seventeen. There a second? All those in favor? Tom?
Hi.
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Andrew Gloria has a question.
Does?
Gloria Miller, yep.
Okay. She's not showing, she's not showing up on my, go ahead, Gloria. She's just not showing up on my.
Hi, Andrea. Thank you. I was just wondering if if you're removing this for now and not talking about making a permanent change, when would you make a decision for this spring? And how would that impact the start of the budget season this year?
I'm not sure it it really will impact the decisions. I think I probably think that, I mean, Jody, help me out here. It seems to me we we would wait till probably at least after the first of the year to see where things are before we make that decision.
Yeah, I would suggest that we you know, we're going to be get moving on our budget and coming to the board and discussing the parameters. I think we should just keep moving forward and then you've got plenty of time to make that decision in the spring.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we are at at least last article that we're going to talk about tonight, which is the Article 28, which is the disposition of 63 Main Street, which is a citizen's petition that was originally on for annual town meeting that the petitioners graciously agreed to postpone until our fall town meeting with the understanding that they did not have to go out and seek new signatures at that time. So I know, I believe that Ellen is out there. She was a while ago. Is she still here? Yes, Ellen is still here.
Ellen, I'm muted. Thank you, Andrew.
Ellen, she just, I don't know if you just briefly want to, I know you made your presentation to the Select Board last spring, but for anybody new who's listening, if you'd just like to, you know, briefly make your presentation again, you know, please feel free to do so.
I appreciate that. Thank you. For the petitioners, this is the next logical step following the town purchasing this property in the fall of 2018. You then appointed a task force to decide how the town should, what the town should do with 63 Main Street. Just to clarify, this is the building that burned that's next door to the Roden Bush Community Center. So a survey was done and the task force reported back to the Select Board in the fall of 2019. And of the 10 choices on that questionnaire, the top vote getter in terms of do you agree or strongly agree was the the statement, sell this property as a single family residence with a historic restriction. And since that was the only of the 10 that got over 50%, those of us who happened to agree with that statement felt the next reasonable step was to bring it to a fall town meeting and let town meeting decide if they agree with that. And so the article asks this body on October 17th to please direct the Board of Selectmen to sell the building as a single family residence. The wording is in the warrant. It would have an historic preservation restriction on it. So for Main Street, the structure would not change. It's it's 1893 integrity would be retained. And there is also an element to keep some of the back land, it's over three acres, that abuts the town hall parking lot. So if the town wanted to extend that parking lot for the town hall, they could have up to 35 acres, but that would not impede on the house. So that's what we're up to. And so we encourage people to come to town meeting and support this and have a good discussion about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Comments from the board? Mark?
Yeah, in light of the fact that we are delaying 51 Main Street, I don't support this. So I think it is still wise to keep our options open, given that we don't know where 51 Main Street is going. It costs us virtually nothing to keep it. And I'd like to not limit our choices once we have further discussion on 51 Main.
Okay. Other, Tom?
I also recall there were a number of members of the same task force that I think wanted a little bit more time to make you know, further recommendations and weigh in on the parking situation because there's a couple of different options there. And to me, it doesn't seem like it's we don't, I don't think we lose anything by waiting and getting that additional consideration. So I think having this one sort of particular approach, you know, brought forward now is it just doesn't feel necessary to me, given that if we wait six months and get additional input and get a little clarification on what really is best for Westford in terms of the parking situation, I'd rather take the time.
May I respond to that? Or do you want to listen to other members of the board, Andrew, before I respond to those two comments?
I I want to listen to other members of the board first, Ellen, and
Thank you so much.
Okay, Anita, Scott?
Is it Anita then Scott or?
I, no, go ahead.
You go first. No, no.
Honestly, I mean, I agree with.
I mean, I agree with, with, with Mark and Tom and also add that we, we've kind of sort of lost sight of, you know, the road for a school admin building and we discussed having, you know, a study done to look at various parcels in town, this being, you know, one of them. So again, I don't want to go removing pieces from a chessboard until we know that we don't, you know, need that particular piece anymore. So I, I think this is too early to do this and COVID has really, everything six months, so we need to, little investigation.
And Anita, do you have anything to add? I just give you the opportunity, I, I don't know if you have anything to add or not.
Well, yeah, I guess I'm just gonna agree with what everyone else said and I, I mean, the 54% of the, of those surveyed is very loud in my ear and I am thinking about sort of like the larger financial impact of everything, but Mark's point about being unsure about 51 Main Street and I'm also thinking about the library expansion and not really sure about how that's gonna play out. If it doesn't cost the town too much money to keep it and we do have some time to wait another year or six months, then I would support that.
Okay, Ellen, I, I said that you could respond after other board members, so go ahead.
Thank you. The reason that we have, the petitioners have put this on the warrant for now is exactly because we want to preclude the other options. We do not want the town to consider that for municipal building. It's not what we thought the town had in mind when the town purchased the building. We really thought that we were doing it so we would retain its single-family status and Main Street would stay as it has been since that house was built in 1893. So our goal is exactly to preclude a school administration building from being considered for that property. So we're very upfront about that. And secondly, the point about waiting won't matter. It does matter to an old house to sit empty. You know, my husband and I bought the Westford Nursing Home, it had been empty for three and a half years and we got it right on the cusp. Old houses don't like sitting empty. The town farm is another example. The sooner that we can find a new owner for that property who will love it and live in it, the better. And I hope we can do it at this fall town meeting. Thank you.
Okay, Mark, I will let you respond, but Paul Fassbender is out there with, with a comment as well, so let me hear from him first and then I'll get back to you, okay? Paul?
Thank you, yes, I agree with Ellen. Basically, from my point of view, any proposal for town use of the building is going to cost us time and money that in my opinion, we don't have. We've talked about earlier, what gets involved in terms of design, appraisals, funding and construction, it's gonna be a multi-year project, it's gonna cost us, you know, hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars to do anything there. It's going to be in competition with future projects that have been identified, which I believe are higher priority, like the Town Center Building, the library expansion and so forth. And frankly, I worked for a number of computer companies in the seventies and eighties that liked to buy and renovate old buildings and residences for office and meeting space and it didn't always work out well. You know, trying to turn an old house into, into functioning office space is not the best use of our resources. If we want a school administration building, we should build a purpose, build one or find one that much closer fits our needs, in my opinion.
Thank you. Mark?
Yeah, so this whole concept of this is all about a school administration building is ridiculous, okay? All that we're talking about and what was recommend and how this was agreed to by the town was to provide options. And since we don't know what 51 Main Street brings forward to us, we have a piece of property that is still very valuable, costs us virtually nothing to hold on to until we understand where 51 Main is going. The rush to urgency to try to sell something in the winter in New England seems a little farfetched. So waiting for us to understand about 51 Main Street, it is, in my opinion, the right thing to do and I would make a motion to not recommend Article 28.
Okay.
Oh, second.
With that, is there, okay, and I don't see any more questions, so all those in favor of not recommending Article 28, Tom?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you all.
And with that, that, that concludes at least our, our reviews of, our review of the, the articles on the town, special town meeting warrant for tonight. We will finish reviewing the articles hopefully at our next meeting and just for everybody's information, the select board has scheduled an additional meeting for next Tuesday, September 29th. We hope to finish our review of the articles during that meeting, but if we don't, we have one more meeting before special town meeting on October 13th, when we can finish up our review or if there are any articles that we still have questions about, we can ask them then. So everybody who has worked on these articles and put them together, thank you all for your very hard work, we appreciate it and we'll see you at special town meeting on October 17th.
Sounds good. Good night.
Good night. We, we're at our 8:45 PM item, which is old and new business.
Andrea and Jody, I think, had a question.
Andrea?
Yes.
Can I dismiss finance committee? After that, they can choose to stay or not.
You certainly can. How are you?
I know, I just want to give them an option to drop off if they adjourn the meeting, that's all.
They're welcome to stay if they'd like.
Yeah, I, I'll say, but I just want to see somebody that gives them a option to drop off, that's all. Does somebody want to make a motion to adjourn the finance committee?
Some.
Okay, yeah.
I guess no one's staying.
I guess, right, I think they're leaving, all right.
Okay, Dennis first and John seconded the motion, so I'm going here in order, Beth? Beth Morrison?
She's unmuted.
I'm looking at the names here, so that's Dennis?
Aye.
Ari, aye. Jake?
Aye.
John?
Yes.
Christina?
Aye.
Levi?
Aye.
That's it.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Okay, Jody?
So I tried to let you know, but you are not reviewing all the articles at your next meeting because the planning board continued all of their articles to their meeting in October, so you will not be seeing any of the planning board until your following meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Stand corrected, we'll be reviewing all the articles except for the planning board articles.
Right. You'll have plenty to do though. So in old new business that you did bring up, if you remember, you extended outdoor table service for our liquor licenses, I don't know how many weeks ago. So the, the state is allowing you to expand and we're asking you to do that subject to permitting department requirements and extend the outdoor table service of food and beverages pursuant to Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission Advisory, Section 4 of COVID-19 Order Number 35, from November 1st, for any period up to 60 days after the end of the state of the emergency.
Still moved.
Second.
Yes, second. All those in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Aye. Okay, next is a request to execute Jenny Richards' road order of taking. Paul, are you still with us?
Yes, I am, thank you, Madam Chair. This is just one more of the many, 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 many steps in the street acceptance process. Town meeting authorized you to execute this order of taking prepared by town council. The final step will be when I go to Lowell and record this at the Middlesex North Registry of Deeds. And then the final, final, final step is when I stop by Good Times and have lunch on my way back from the Registry of Deeds. And that's a tradition in my office, we, we, we celebrate our, I think this is the 17th unaccepted road that we brought into the town's inventory. So welcome to the club, Jenny Richards, if you get some.
All right, is there, is there?
I make a motion to re, to execute.
We need a motion to approve?
Yeah, motion to execute Jenny Richards.
Is there a second?
Second.
Right, that. All those in favor, Mark?
Yes.
Mark?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye. And then we have a request to appoint election offices with terms to expire on July 31st, 2021. Is there a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Aye. We did board reports and updates, we did minutes, we're back to town managers' report. We already talked about the sidewalk gift account. We have a request to determine whether the Massachusetts Historical Commission or the Westford Historical Commission will hold the perpetual historic preservation restriction for the Paris Center for the Arts related to their 2019 annual town meeting CPC appropriation for exterior building renovations. Eric, I believe this is you.
Yes, so there was a appropriation made at annual town meeting in 2019 in the amount of $100,000 for exterior renovations at the Paris Center for the Arts. Chapter 44B requires that a perpetual restriction be placed on the property and be held either by the Mass Historical Commission or at the local level through the Westford Historic Commission. So town council believes that either option would satisfy the perpetual requirement and Mr. Dan La Croix is also here tonight to speak on behalf of the project.
Okay, Dan?
Guess you can't hear me.
Oh, yes, we can.
Guess we can.
Yes, we can.
Yeah, so as Eric mentioned, the preservation restriction for the PCA, which is actually owned by the Historical Society, has been completed and the assumption all along, at least in our part, with the Westford Historical Commission would hold the restriction and they have agreed to do so. So that would be our, our preference, it's easier to deal with, to have to deal with the state itself and they're certainly capable of doing that, so that's what we would recommend.
Any questions, comments? Is there a motion?
Oh, go ahead, Scott.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, you're doing so. No, please, after you.
After you, Elphonse.
Let's take as much time as possible. I would, I will move that the Western Historical Commission will hold the perpetual historic preservation restriction for the Paris Center for the Arts.
Second.
There a second? Okay, all those in favor, Mark?
Yes.
Anita?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye. And I believe we did the rest of town managers' report, so is there a motion?
Nope, 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 nope.
What did we forget?
Number four, and Christine Collins is sitting out there patiently waiting.
Patiently waiting, yes.
Hello, how are you?
Good, thank you for your patience. Christine, thank you for your patience.
So there were a couple of documents in the packet that represent the policy and procedure for credits and adjustments, as well as the application documents. We reviewed them, Tom, I'm sorry, Steve Cronin, Jeremy, Paul, myself, Steve Wersh, Chris Kuchu, we've been working for, you know, quite some time getting these things all together. Then we brought them to the Stormwater Panel, they made a few more suggestions and we even got a little input from one of the condo trustees who's had, you know, pretty interested in the whole process all along. So those documents have been pretty well vetted, but we would invite you to take a look if you have any comments that you would like to make, this is the time because we need to get those sort of going live by the time the bills hit the street. The bills were sent to the printer today, the 7,200 bills totaling about $1,144,000, I believe. And so we're, you know, we're finally getting this over the finish line. So does anyone have any questions? Do I say Mark? Mark has his hand raised.
Yeah, so, so first of all, I was on that panel and I just wanted, it's a huge shot, it's not a question, just gratitude.
I was gonna say, that's why I didn't think you had a question, you were on the panel.
No, so it's not a question, it's just, it's a huge amount of gratitude to all the people who've worked on this. This has been an amazing thing to pull together, Christine and the, and the rest of the team, so I just wanted to do a big shout out for them on all this time and effort. And I am anxiously awaiting my bill, I really can't wait.
Yay, they're gonna be mailed on October 1st, so everyone can be looking for those. The credit application is for people who have existing stormwater management BMPs on their property that help to reduce the actual stormwater discharged into the town systems. The adjustment process is for conditions where maybe there's something wrong with their bill. And also, we are inviting people to tell me that we have the mailing address wrong on condos because I, you know, that was a little harder to figure out than I expected. So anyway, I could talk about stormwater all night, but I know you guys have other things to do.
But thank you, and thank you for all your hard work, we really, and your whole team, we really appreciate it.
Yes, yes.
You and your whole team, we appreciate it. So is there, is there, do we need, do we need a motion?
Yes, we, we would like you to approve the stormwater credit and adjustment process documents and applications.
Is there a motion? Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Tom?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now I think, thank you again, Christine, thank you and your team. So now I think we're done with town managers' report. Is there a motion to waive reading of correspondence?
Still moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, everybody raise their hand, all in favor?
Motion to adjourn.
And is there a second? And all those in favor? Okay, good enough, thank you, everybody. Good night, everybody in Westford, stay safe and remember, we do have a meeting next Tuesday on the 29th. Good night, Westford.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.